Call our meeting to order. First up tonight is approval of the agenda for our regularly scheduled meeting. There are no needs for amendments, I'll take a motion for approval.
Certainly.
And a second. So, all in favor say aye. Aye, aye, none opposed. Moving on now to our two special budget work session minutes and our regular, regular meeting minutes from the seventeen, six and seventy. There are no needs for amendments to those minutes. I'll take a motion for approval of all three. So, a little bit of a cheer. And a second. So, all those in favor say aye. None opposed. Moving on now to initiative reports. Obviously, our thoughts are out there for neighboring counties, Cherokee County's Sheriff Department, sad news coming out of there and keep them in our prayers as they deal with loss of a deputy. And it is the Fourth of July coming up, so everyone please be safe, please be patient. More traffic's on the road and more people are in our area. Any other reports from commissioners this evening? Happy Fourth. If not, we'll roll off to County Manager King and his report.
Want to bring you up to speed on several projects that we've got going. The Center for Domestic Peace should be completed by the end of this month if everything continues to go well. The Cachers Glenville Recreation Area, we did go out for bid for that. We're waiting on that process to go back, back through, taking out the splash pad like we talked about earlier. Whittier Park is in the final stages and should be completed by fall. The Department of Aging should be a kickoff here pretty soon to get that structural damage worked on. The Candlefire Department, we are still in programming phase, trying to figure out the sprinkler systems for the bunk area and also working with BLA who's doing their soil borings and trying to get final civil plans for that. And then we'll be coming back and trying to get that in queue. The Justice Center Admin Building, those are all started as far as the programming piece. We have done soil borings at the Scotland Snot and have done all the civil design work, so we're working through that process. We should be ready by February to do the LGC approval at that point. The other part, the Justice Center is in two phases. So, one is the detention phase, which we've employed Cope Architecture of Knoxville to do that detention work. And then Odell Thompson, the local architect, is doing the Justice Center for the new courtroom. So, that'll be, and that, that is continuing where we're getting ready to engage the judges and some dialogue and, and kind of get through that programming piece for that part of it. The fairgrounds, there should be pouring footers for the new building, one of the new buildings, this week or next weekend and trying to, trying to get that done. So, probably the middle to late July, we'll be starting up with the building and that should take additional months to get it up and then we'll start on the infrastructure inside and, and trying to tie that all together. Also, you know, I may have mentioned, we are working with the EBCI to do the water extension from the New Pepsi Plant across to the Fairground Site. And then that will be a Phase One. The Phase Two will be trying to tie it into the Whittier area and possibly up Thomas Valley Road. So, we'll, we're going to work through that process. We are waiting on ARC funding, which should be announced in September, but we've engaged McGill Associates as the engineer for that project until we'll be working through with them to get that, get that water extension completed. Looking at the schools, so every week we are having meetings with our construction manager at risk, with Matt Vanoy, along with our architects and engineers. The current one we're working on now is the Fairview Elementary and the bus garage, trying to get those completely programmed in. We've already started the process of doing all the soil borings, all the civil engineering work, so that should be ongoing and we'll be bringing back, you know, those as we get more and more into the, to the budget part. Right now, of course, every budget can be a little bit higher, so we're trying to whittle it down that that's the process and the C mark, you kind of work, start off with the first and then you kind of work your way down and see if we can get it into the budget cycle, so. Blue Ridge is still in the programming phase. I think the school board has been sent a, a initial draft of that. Once they, they get all of their stuff done with the programming piece or the design, then we'll, we'll get into the budget process with that one. The middle school, we are still on the due diligence period of the school property. That'll be through August. Right now, we've got some preliminary engineering work being completed and trying to find where we need to put the, the soil borings to get a good parameter of, of, you know, the, the earthwork that we're going to have to take place. So, still, still in that process, but, but it's, everything's as expected. And that'll be all from our report time. Any questions?
When do we expect the Fairview Elementary School project, the Blue Ridge Project and the bus facility to, to begin?
Okay. The, I, I, the Fairview Project and the bus garage will go, will go quicker than the Blue Ridge because there's a lot more stuff being done at Blue Ridge. It's just the cafeteria and the dining room at Fairview is the only thing. And then, of course, the bus garage is a simple steel structure. Blue Ridge will probably be third quarter of 2026. This time, maybe next year, we'll be starting that process of getting it in the queue. But as far as Fairview, hopefully by springtime, we'll be in constructions where our hopes are. Right now, we're looking at the admin and the Fairview and the bus garage going to the LGC application in February for the debt service, so.
Questions on the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, now to informal comments. First up this evening, we have Tom Downing.
Thank you, Tom Downing. I do live here in Jackson County. I was struck as your county manager was reading that project list. It's really amazing, a lot of work in that, and I can see how we don't just go and do things. We have a process, we have a plan with the LGC, the Local Government Commission, looking out for us, making sure we're doing things correctly. Tell what, we don't do that for the library removal though, do we? Never mind. I want to clarify my remarks. I talked about leadership last time I was up here, and what I should have said was, it's the county manager's budget and the county manager works with whoever you want him to work with, in terms of your staff and you as a board. And you decide who to bring up for whatever you're going to talk to them about, whether it's the school superintendent or the sheriff or somebody else. The reality is superintendent asks for $900 for non-certified staff for a year. What she got was 200. And when I hear someone who's elected official talking about how awesome that is, I think about, that's not that awesome, $200 if you're trying to maintain and retain staff. There's a technical term for that. When a board does something like that, when a member talks about something like that, you can go watch the remarks, you can listen to it. The term is a slap in the face, and that seems to be the modus operandi of this board. Slap in the face when you spend several years negotiating an agreement and then you get out of it. Slap in the face to the two counties, slap in the face to the employees of the FRL, what are they supposed to do? Slap in the face to the residents of this county? There's another technical term for it. It's a total cluster fiasco. Now, a cluster fiasco is when a government group just ignores the general way you're supposed to do stuff, ignores your policies, ignores your procedures, and just does something. And of course, we all know what a fiasco is, what you're going to get into in the next year and beyond. We don't know what it's going to cost to leave the FRL, and apparently you don't care. That's not management, that's not leadership. That's a fiasco.
Good evening. I just have very brief comments, but I think the public deserves a detailed public statement and rationale for the FRL vote that includes the fiscal analysis of the impacts on the county. It seems that this was an emotional decision and if fully enacted, will result in millions of dollars of increased taxpayer burden over the next decade. One million in the first year and approximately 4.5 million in projected costs over the following nine years. I'd like to know the hard facts the decision was based on. And I've listened to previous meetings and it is not clear to me. Fiscally, the current library decision appears to represent a violation of the commission's legal fiduciary responsibility to make financial decisions that benefit the county. When can we expect a public statement explaining the reasoning behind your recent decision to leave the FRL?
Next, we have Rowan. Debbie Jeffries?
Hi, can you hear me? I'm afraid that's going to be a hard act to follow. Okay, so, thank you for listening to my comments and happy Fourth of July also. By deciding to leave the Fontana Regional Library System, the majority of the commissioners have shown a staggering lack of leadership and foresight. True leaders would have reviewed the financial data fully to see how removing Jackson County's libraries from the FRL would affect taxpayers and avoiding spending more taxpayer dollars to keep the same services. True leadership requires actually doing homework and not just listening to hearsay. True leaders would have learned about library processes fully and then encouraged county residents who were unhappy with particular books to follow the approved process for challenges. True leaders would have consulted with the experts from other library systems such as the North Carolina State Library to learn about best practices for addressing concerns about books. True leaders would have investigated what effect the decision to leave the FRL will have on our residents. You say services won't be reduced. Many disagree with you. It is incumbent on you as our leaders to provide evidence of this. True leaders would have stood up to outside influences advocating changes that do not benefit county residents. It's hypocritical to say that the issue with the FRL Board was that other counties' board members could override votes from Jackson County, when many of the main advocates for leaving the FRL come from Macon and other counties. True leaders would have held class to the compromise from last year with the FRL in Swain and Macon County that was worked out. You have now gone against compromises, the other being the agreement regarding the monument at the old courthouse. True leaders understand the importance of teamwork and collaboration and inspire others to work toward a common goal for the benefit of all, not just a few. Leadership doesn't mean always getting your way regardless of the consequences, but it does mean being transparent, accountable, and humble. So, in conclusion, your decision was made in a non-transparent manner. It will result in higher costs for the county and taxpayers and a loss of the quality services and jobs the FRL provides. You seem to be taking these possibilities lightly in your haste to root out particular books that do not reflect your personal worldview. By choosing this path, you're destroying something that many of us, including myself, worked so hard to create. Those who built and support the Jackson County Public Library and the FRL system are the true leaders of this county. You should follow their example and reverse, reverse your recent decision. Thank you.
Becky Abel?
Hi, everybody. Good to be here. I'd like to thank you for what work you have done for our county as elected officials and staff members. And I've committed a faux pas that, that most of you did too, with the exception of Chairman Letson, who did some research about what would happen if we made the decision to withdraw us from the county libraries, I mean, from the FRL. And that is that I did not prepare anything, so this is all off the cuff. I have been awfully disappointed and my dad used to always have a clip with everything, no matter what his emotion was. And about this decision, my dad would say something like, "Well, this is one thing. Other than that, how was the play?" And I don't know if you remember hearing that in your childhood, but he was a good old North Carolina boy too, and he had a million of them. But, so I'm fine except for that. I'm very disappointed. This is a hub for me, the library is. It was where I first found my first friends when I moved here, and yes, I'm one of those people who moved here. But if nobody moved here, what would we have? Okay? So, I'm really hoping that you've got the clock ticking now for a year where we can reverse this decision and understand that we're not going away. We're still going to be showing up. I'd like to talk to you more about it. I'd like for you to do the research, and as others have said, to give us the numbers. They're going to cost all of us, even those who've only been here four and a half years, a lot more tax there money. This is coming out of our pockets and we like what we have. We don't want to change it for the reasons that don't align with people who can't see past their own congregations.
Casey Wallawinder?
I am Casey Wallawinder. I also live in Jackson County, like Rowan. I feel sad. I have a younger sister who told me to quit telling you guys that I feel sad, but it's where I am. She said they don't care about how anybody feels, and I think she's right. That doesn't mean that I don't feel like I have a duty to continue to speak my truth. I, watching last week's meeting, I was actually with a bunch of friends and people were on a camping trip and we were hanging out and we made sure to stream the meeting because it was really important to us. It feels really disappointing that it doesn't seem as important to all of you, right? That like, who first made it very clear that the library's site, right? Like Jenny, you've, you've made it clear the library's not important to you in any way. You've listened to hours of public comment, of people telling you how important it is, and you don't seem to care. You've had your county manager tell you how much it's going to cost and you don't seem to care. Everybody else is concerned about increased costs, quite honestly, I'm not because I think that the lack of caring means that you guys don't care what services we have in the library. You don't care what hours they're open. You don't care about the quality of staff that we have. Like, that's what you've shown us. And when you met with our library board, quite honestly, I felt embarrassed for you. Like, commissioners lost their tempers and raised their voices. You were unprepared for the most part, right? It seemed like Letson was maybe the only one. I think, Bryson, I think you have tried to look at the numbers and do things. I think unfortunately, you still chose to go against what your county was telling you they wanted. John Smith, I feel like you, I don't know, what I've been told, I stay off of Facebook around here, but what I've been told is that you're using Bible verses to kind of be this Christian martyr, that you're taking this on for the sake of something else. And I honestly, it feels like Christian nationalism and you don't get to be the martyr when you're the one causing the harm. Like, I don't know how many ways, like, how many of us have to show up here and tell you guys that we feel like they're not representing us and for you just to continue to not care. We've, we've not gotten a formal statement from any of you about who your seat and whether you can legally hold that seat and what it means and what kind of information and data she has access to. We received zero information about the plaque on the Silva Sam. We, I had a brief conversation where Letson approached me about the school board being voted partisan, which I appreciated, but again, we weren't given any of that information ahead of time. Thank you, guys.
Antonette McGuire?
Chairman Letson and everybody, thank you for letting me speak again, and I really appreciate what your chairman had to say at our last, at your last budget meeting about giving this new library board, the new Fontana Regional Library Board appointees, of which many you got to appoint, give them a chance to find solutions to the commissioners' perceived problems. You haven't given the very people that you asked to serve the opportunity to follow through. The people who were on the board before are gone and you have new folks. So, I thank you, Chairman Letson, for that. And I wasn't going to say anything else because I wanted to be really brief, but I do want to say something about my feelings. I think, and I could be wrong, it hurts my feelings if somebody calls my name and says I'm doing something that they don't like. But I'll tell you something that really hurts my feelings. I'm not a conservative, Christian person with mountain values. I've lived here for 22 years, but I'm still not considered somebody who has any mountain values. What I want to tell you is every single one of you, all the people from the other side, we're all part of the human race, and those are the values that I admire, the values that hold us together, the values that don't hurt our feelings all the time, the values that we can communicate with each other without using nasty expressions, the values that you can come to a meeting you can come to a meeting prepared to understand why we care about the library the way it is. So, I have my feelings hurt, because I don't feel like many people who've spoken at these meetings and perhaps some of the folks on the board consider that I'm part of the people that you should be thinking about. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Moving on now to new business. First up, we have Ms. Fox with grant project ordinance.
Got the grant project ordinance for the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Other Substance Use Program. It's an inside-out project. It's for the jail. It's a U.S. Department of Justice grant in the amount of $998,952, and the grant runs through September the 30th of 2027.
Questions regarding the grant ordinance amendment? Excuse me. Is this the one that Sheriff Farmer brought in, the M A T grant?
This is an additional grant.
An additional grant?
Yes.
To help with that?
Yes.
Any questions for Ms. Fox? If not, I'll see a motion for approval.
Move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hooper?
Yes.
Chairman Letson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Next, we have an office offered to purchase and a contract for a piece of property. I'll turn it over to Mr. King.
I think you have a copy of that in your packet. Basically, this was, in closed session, we discussed the request from the town of Dillsborough to be a partner in the acquisition of a piece of property inside the town limit, to be used for tourism-related activities and parking, possibly. There was a lot of dialogue about the utilization. They wanted for us to be a partner, and I think that, you know, the initial concept was that we would be developing an interlocal governmental agreement between the two, and now we would have to work with them on the utilization of the property. They are requesting $500,000, which can come in two parts. One, they did fill out an application for the T D A for $250,000, and then the county would put in $250,000. But the closing date is before the T D A can make a decision, so they're requesting that the county provide the initial half million, and then hopefully during the process, work with the T D A on other projects. That would help with the cost of it. They would be putting in $175,000, so the total cost of the property is $675,000. And I've got, I gave you all a, like a, yeah, a map of it, so.
Is it both track, A and B?
Yeah, the track, one track is next to the other one. It's like Point 08, so.
I thought it was, but I was just making sure.
So, we didn't, the county didn't.
If the T D A could vote against it?
The T D A, yeah, during the grant request, they can vote against it. You know, and at this point, I think they're going to be looking at it this month as far as the grants. But, you know, there'll be other opportunity for development, so even if we didn't get that grant, we could possibly, you know, make it even a better shot with their contribution later on, so.
Yeah, I mean, if they even, if they don't help purchase, they'll help pay, they'll help put in bathrooms, they'll help put in.
Parking.
Parking.
Much like bridge parking.
Yeah. And that, I don't remember the cost on that, but they put in bridge parking, about a million, nine hundred and something?
Almost two. We split that.
Yeah, a little over nine hundred. My memory's pretty good.
Did the town put in a portion of that as well? It's been a couple of years.
Yeah, a little over.
I think the town put in, and we also put in, and T D A matched both.
The percentage of ownership is going to be.
Would be 75/25, 75% county and 25% county Dillsborough.
I think it's good, be good for the town of Dillsborough. They have the train that comes in. Of course, they get off and get back on the train, but.
For Lumineers and some of the festivals they have, that can help them grow.
Well, they're fixing to reopen, hopefully reopen the Jarrett House, which has a little bit of a wall, but still, they need some parking down there, for sure.
Is there a motion for the $500,000 to purchase this property?
Oh, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chairman Letson?
Yes.
Is there any questions this evening from the press? If not, we do have a need to go into closed session this evening for real property and legal. So, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. None opposed? We will go into closed session in five minutes. Coming out of closed session, there was no action taken. With no further business in our regular meeting, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. None opposed? We are. We'll go ahead and open up our workspace. First up tonight, we have Ms. Lippert, the Health Director, who's going to go through the Health Department report.
Good evening. Just hit the arrows, Logan? Okay. Awesome. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening and highlight the impact of public health here in Jackson County. Our mission at the Health Department is to ensure, enhance, promote, and protect the health of our residents through prevention and education. Public health prevention reduces healthcare costs. In fact, it's estimated that for every dollar spent on public health prevention. In fact, it's estimated that for every dollar spent on public health prevention, communities can save five dollars and sixty cents in healthcare costs and productivity losses. Public health, also known as population health, works to protect the health of our community as a whole. So this is a little bit different than clinical care in that the impact is community-wide rather than on the individual. So public health can be seen as the bridge between healthcare and community well-being. The illustration on the right-hand side of the screen shows the three core functions of public health, which is encompassed by the ten essential services. We have assessment, assessing the needs of our community, implementing rules, laws, practices that influence system and individual change, and then assuring that appropriate public health services are provided in our community. So this is public health. This, public health is our community's first line of defense, but also the last safety net. Every day, public health's working behind the scenes to prevent hazards and keep our community healthy. When public health works well, you don't notice it. Some of the things that public health is responsible for is protecting communities from infectious diseases, clean water and sanitation systems, health education campaigns to promote healthy lifestyle and disease prevention, and also disease surveillance and emergency response to help detect and control public health threats. Just to name a couple. And of course, none of our work would be possible without our dedicated staff. When we're fully staffed, we have sixty-three full-time employees, three part-time employees. Dr. Casey Pringer is our medical director or supervising physician. And then we also have varying temporary part-time employees that help as animal shelter attendants. The Board of Health is a governing board that has responsibility for public health within its jurisdiction. Its authority is established by state statute. The Board of Health is an eleven-member board, and members are appointed by all of you as Commissioners. But general statute does direct the composition of the board, as you can concede listed there. The board works with Health Department leadership staff and the community to protect and promote health within Jackson County. Chairman Letson is our Board of Commissioner representative, and our board meets monthly on the second Monday of the month. Quarterly, I'm sorry. Quarterly, May, March, June, September, and December. General statute also requires that all Health Departments in North Carolina obtain accreditation. The cycle occurs every four years, includes a self-assessment, a site visit, and then also determination status by board. In May, we just went through our accreditation process. We were accredited with honors, which means that we miss one or less activities within each of the five standards. And we actually, at Jackson County Health Department, had one hundred and forty-five out of one hundred and forty-seven activities met. While every Health Department in North Carolina is unique, we do have certain mandated services that we have to provide. But we also, at the local level, have flexibility to tailor programs to meet the specific needs of our community. You can see listed here the services and programs that we offer at the Jackson County Health Department for our residents. So I'll go through each of those. So this slide shows our clinical services that we offer. Clinic staff don't only provide these services within our building, but we also go out into the community and work with different partners to bring the services to the public. And this past fiscal year, our clinic served over forty-eight hundred unique patients and delivered close to sixty-five hundred services across those visits. Our staff also take great pride in educating and mentoring the next generation of healthcare workers. Each semester, we host numerous students in our clinic to provide hands-on experience and hopefully encouraging some new public health career professionals. As you remember, last fiscal year, we took on the School Health Program. We have five school nurses and two community health assistants that serve this program, and it covers all of Jackson County public schools. We're actually still looking for two school nurses, so if anyone out there's listening and would like to be a school nurse, we encourage you to apply. The team developed program policies and procedures, trained school staff, worked with Blue Ridge Health for the school-based health clinics throughout the year, really just established this program throughout this year. Just from January to the end of May, the school program staff served almost thirty-five hundred student visits. Now that we have this first year under our belt, we feel confident that we're well-positioned to grow and continue to have a greater impact on the students and the school. At the Health Department, we also operate a full-service laboratory. We operate under the CLIA contract of the State Lab for Public Health. We provide lab services for our clinical patients, but also outside doctor's orders and then with our outreach team out in the community. We do accept lab orders from all authorized medical providers. We have staff that are trained in urine drug screen collection and breath alcohol testing. And then labs that aren't processed in-house are sent to our reference lab. The WIC program is a special supplemental nutrition program for women, infants, and children up to age five. Our WIC program serves an average between eight hundred and eight hundred and fifty participants a year. And last fiscal year, Jackson County WIC purchases totaled eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, and that's money distributed back into our local economy at our stores. We also offer some additional nutrition programs in the community, such as medical nutrition therapy and diabetes self-management education. I will say that we're one of the few providers offering outpatient nutrition services in our region. So we do see a lot of referrals for those programs. Even the hospital is not offering that service. The administration of vital records falls under the purview of public health also. General statute outlines the responsibilities of the Health Department and the Health Director in managing vital records. As local Health Director, I serve as our local registrar. And then I also have appointed two deputy registrars that we have here in Jackson County. And those folks collaborate with Register of Deeds, local hospital, and funeral homes to make sure we're getting those applications processed. Last year, staff processed one hundred and forty-one births and three hundred and twenty deaths. Our Environmental Health Section promotes and protects the health of our community through mandated inspections and enforcement of local and state public health laws, rules, and regulations. The environmental health specialists are authorized by the North Carolina Division of Environmental Health and registered by the State Board of Registered Environmental Health Specialists to enforce these rules and regulations. Our environmental health staff really pride themselves in being a resource of information and education for the community. For an example, you can see that staff provide a annual septic installers training. We've done this for a couple of years, and that allows septic installers in our area to get their continuing education requirement. This is not something that's required by the state, but something that our staff do extra. And you can see this past year, we had one hundred and seventy-eight participants in that. They also work with partners to do the regional training for early childcare and education for childcare workers in western Carolina, too. In 2024, you can see they had one hundred and twenty-one participants. Environmental health are also instrumental in our Hurricane Helene response, helping with water sampling, helping folks with system repairs that they needed. We also send staff to other counties to help fill in when they had no staff to work or just needed extra hands to inspect places, so. So Animal Control is responsible for enforcing the county ordinance and state laws applicable to cruelty of animals, rabies control and prevention, investigation of animal cruelty, and maintaining our animal shelter. You can see they continue to grow in this new shelter. It's a lovely facility. If you haven't been out to see it, I encourage you to stop by. We have monthly sponsorships for pet adoption, so we have, it's a great partnership with different local businesses. The business will sponsor an animal for the month, and so they'll cover that adoption fee. So then it's free for the public coming in. We also have been doing adoption events outside the shelter at different local businesses upon request. And then we've had several that have offered to help with pet food and supply donations. During Hurricane, we were giving out free pet food and supplies. We had some grant money to do that. We did it three times a week for six months. Now we have those once a month. The next free pet food and supply giveaway is July eleventh. You can see they also hold regular rabies vaccine clinics. Just in March, they administered a hundred rabies vaccines and seventy-seven distemper vaccines. We also heavily rely on volunteers at the animal shelters. So again, this is kind of a plug to anyone that might be listening. Volunteers are instrumental in helping keep the facility clean and providing enrichment for the animals, socializing the animals, exercising with the animals, grooming them, taking pictures of them to put on social media for adoption. We also make sure to provide any volunteers with a good orientation, too. Public health is also charged with protecting the public during a public health emergency situation. We work closely with emergency management, also the Western Region and State Preparedness Teams. Of course, Hurricane Helene was our most real-life experience getting to exercise our emergency response. During her, our public health staff worked at the Emergency Operations Center, handling over thirty-three hundred calls during a three-week period, staffed the two emergency shelters, worked with law enforcement and EM on evacuations, staffed pods where we gave out food and water and other supplies, and then also assisted with some door-to-door welfare checks of community residents. Our health education is at the core of public health. During this past year, we conducted our community health assessment, which guides our work for the next three years. The three health priorities that were determined out of this assessment were healthy eating, substance use, and mental health. So the next step will be to develop our community health improvement plans where we'll work on strategies for addressing those priority areas. As you remember, last year, we also took the lead for the opioid settlement funds. You've heard from Megan and Jody and have approved the first wave of funding. So those are set to go out now that we're into the new fiscal year. So we'll be able to update you guys on the progress of that hopefully really soon. We also have Hepatitis C Bridge Cancer Physician and then Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention, and that is implemented with ninth graders in Jackson County schools. Continuing with some health education, we also have our Colley Community Garden. It's in its twelfth year. It's an organic donation-based garden. And last year, you can see the garden donated close to eight hundred pounds of fresh local produce to Food Relief in Jackson County. We also have a very active Safe Kids Coalition. It's led by the Health Department, but includes many community partners. Some of the initiatives are bicycle safety, child passenger safety, water safety, medication, hot car awareness, safe sleep. I don't know if you've noticed, but we have LifeJack at winter stations at about nine different locations throughout the county at river and lake access points. That's from Safe Kids. We also have five fire departments and the Emergency Management Office that are certified child passenger safety technicians, so they can install and inspect car seats.
What are those four locations?
Boston Fire Department, Casser's Fire Department, Qualit Fire Department number two, Savannah Fire Department, and Colley Fire Department. And we're hopeful that Silva is really close to being onboard, too. I did also want to just highlight, too, that you can see there, we have a late clinic now, the second Wednesday of the month, and that's based on some feedback we've heard from the public that they wanted some extended evening hours. So we are implementing a new late clinic once a month, and our first one will be on July the ninth. So appointments will go until seven PM. That's all I have for you. I appreciate your time and attention and learning about public health, and I invite each of you to come to the department and learn about some of the great work that we're doing in the community. And just want you to know that I'm available as a resource for any public health concerns you might have or hear about and want to discuss. Just feel free to reach out. Does anyone have any questions?
One question, I think.
Yeah.
Talked about this, but just so everyone knows, on the school nurse, what are the qualifications?
They have, they have to be a registered nurse in North Carolina. Yep.
Four years or two years? Yeah, I was gonna say, is it BSN or is it?
I don't believe it ha, I'll have to confirm on that. I don't believe it has to be a BSN, but it's highly encouraged to be a BSN. But I'll have to look back at, at the job spec on that. I don't remember.
A lot of, I know we talked about this, too, whenever the transition started, but a lot of the school nurses, I think, were CNAs. They go into school.
So we still have, we still have two of them staff members who are not registered nurses and they're community health assistants. So they work under the direction of the lead school nurse.
I got a question about existing septic systems.
Oh, gosh. Well, I might have an answer for you. I might have to get back to you.
I think it's always kind of been if somebody's got a mobile home or a house with an existing septic, been there forever, but if they pull it out, the mobile home, or tear down the house, hooking back to it with something new. From what I understand, it's kind of left into the building department's hands. Is that correct?
That, I would not want to tell you incorrect information. I know that if you change what it was permitted for at all, then it would have to be re-permitted. So if you remove, I mean, and just thinking about the information you just said, if you're removing what it was permitted for and change that, like additional bedrooms or whatnot, then it very well may have to be a renewed permit.
Example, I'm, I'm referring to is more like if it was a two-bedroom before, if it was a mobile home, and it fell down over the years and the system was put in the sixties. Just for example. And then they clean it up, put a new two-bedroom in there. Can they just, I think there's a this guy, at, at that point, whether you can hook back to that existing system or whether you have to, because it might not be up to today's standards.
Correct. It likely is not.
Right. So, but if it's grandfathered in because it's always had a two-bedroom, is it still policy to be able to hook back to that?
Again, I, I don't want to tell you something wrong, but if you want to call me tomorrow, I can make sure I can find out that information for you.
I think, I think they have to come out and inspect it.
Well, they would definitely have to inspect it.
Uncover and roll everything so they can see the lines going out.
But again, if it's being altered in any way, I'm not sure what, where that line is to, whether you'd have to get a new permit or not.
Somewhere, in some situations, I think it gets sent to the building department. I don't know. We'll talk, we'll talk later.
Yeah. Feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? I do want to just end on this one, because I like to just do a plug and make sure, you know, that, just to remind our community that we're here for everybody. We serve everyone in our community. We even see people who, you know, may just vacation here, or they might live here part of the time. But bottom line is, is we're here to serve our whole community regardless. So just want to end on that good note. Yep. Yep.
Moving on now to our Board of Health member appointment recommendations and Mr. King.
So we got a letter uh, from the Board of Health concerning the appointments for this year. And, you know, with our new policy on appointments, uh, just want to kind of confirm with you um, the process that you would like to go through with this, because these are specific appointments and they've already been vetted by the Board of Health from, from that standpoint or the, the health department. And so didn't want to know, just want to know kind of the, the thought process, uh, you know, moving forward, do you just want to put these names on the agenda for the middle of the month and go ahead and approve them, uh, since they're a lot by the position?
I, I feel like we should. I mean, these are pretty specific appointments, so. Um, and these people are willing to serve. We've got to find what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and three years to fill these, these spots and it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough. But we'll find them. But I, I'm, I'm for approving these to move on to the next, uh, next meeting and get them through for the health department.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of these people.
How many that's off of there? All of these?
All of these, it's, it, some of these are half-terms, like, like you see, half a year, year served. That's finishing out a term. And then they'll be reappointed for three years, so all of these will be reappointed for three years. And some, some of the physicians, this will be their last um, appointment. Their final three years they can serve. It's a, it's a three-term deal. They serve every three years, or for three years.
Yeah, I think let's just.
With a maximum of nine.
I mean, the Board of Health, I guess it's the Board of Health that's recommending this or that or any other one, so I think we just need to
Proceed.
Proceed. That's my opinion.
Put it on the agenda for the middle of the month then.
Right. Is there consensus? You know, now to the Board of Equilation and Review Appointments.
This is not only appointments or, or kind of the the structure for the appointments, but also we did, uh, Tabitha had done some um, tweaking to the the lack, actual resolution, creating the Board of Equilation Review. You know, as you know, that's a process done by the Machinery Act and you have to have this board set up to listen to appeals of property values. Uh, most importantly, it's, it's good during a revaluation year, but they, they do hear appeals every year. Um, so, and usually in the month of May. So with this, uh, the big change that, that we're requesting is that the board be appointed now, uh, for, I think for a four-year term. And in that way, it would get them through the next revaluation process, so you have some continuity of, of the board that they've, you know, been in place for that four-year term and she's here if you want to have any, any questions.
I think this is a great idea. That way, we're not held captive by board appointments for your job.
Yeah, I think they've been on the annual, at least since two thousand and nine.
Yeah.
And it would just be helpful if this happened all on this one-year term, this four-year term, we get them through the revow. Of course, if any of them can't serve or aren't willing to serve, and at any time, we can go by whatever policy
Right.
the board has in place to put someone else in there, but just give them best ability for years.
Right.
That we need, yeah.
Yeah.
Common sense.
Yeah.
So with, with, at the board's pleasure, we'll put that on the agenda for the middle of the month also.
Next, we have the interview process for appointments and, and how we're going to kind of handle all of this.
And, and all of this doesn't have to be, you know, decided on or not, but you get, we're given a list of all the different uh, boards that are coming up both in the um, June and the December timeframe with those, by the, by the policy that y'all put in place. We're kind of just wanting to know from the standpoint of each board in particular, which ones will, will need to be going through an interview process and kind of what the expectations of the board is when you're looking at that. Do you want, you know, all of them at the same time? Do we want to, you know, stagger them maybe a month or two out before that end? Um, I, I guess that, that, that would be the biggest question is, is what boards in particular are we looking at doing and kind of giving us some, you know, some protocol.
I guess how, how far in advance are we going to start? It would, you know, we would have to do it during the work session, so that gives us a little bit more time to, you know, for them to come up and ask questions and for us to ask questions. Um, so if I think we need to look at the board vote or how many boards we have and how many.
We need to get John in on this discussion too.
Yeah, really just looking at how many people we're looking at per session, so. It's twenty people, two minutes apiece. Uh, maybe we can cut that down to three meetings. Um, I, I think we just need to have a little bit more discussion about this and how we're going to proceed before we move it to a vote. Would it be wrong of me to ask for, for everyone just kind of look at it and come back with ideas um, at our next meeting to have a discussion about it and see where we can kind of?
Next work session?
Yeah, next work session to, to look at what we're.
Great idea.
I, I think that's going to be the best scope uh, of management for this. Do y'all have something in that, in your packet about this? I thought I did. I, I saw one earlier. I was looking for it. Yeah.
Yeah, Angie sent an email earlier that had that stuff in it, or some of the boards coming up, so.
As long as we're ready by the, by the next cycle, which will be the December cycle.
Yeah.
Then if we, if you decide two months out, we need to start the process and, and the type of boards, I mean, if you want to do all the boards or if you just want to have particular boards that you're that you want to be in the process.
I, I think we, we don't need to focus so much on boards like the health board where they are required to be certain, have certain qualifications or licensures or, or whatever to serve on the board. Uh, it's the, I think it's the general boards that we need to look at uh, closer.
And that's fine. I, I, I think we can do that. Um, so I would, I would say everyone needs to take this list and, and kind of highlight what you feel is going to be some of the ones that, that are gonna need more um, information from, so.
I agree.
Yep. So we proceed. Um, moving on now to our inter-local agreement with Board of Education.
So this inter-local governmental agreement is um, between Jackson County and the Jackson County School Board and it's mostly concerning, or it is concerning, all of the projects that we're kind of in, involved in. Um, this is very similar to agreements that we've had in the past. Uh, but we did have to switch up a lot of the uh, verbiage in this agreement to kind of coincide with the C-MOR, the Construction Manager at Risk way of doing the projects. And so a lot of that, that is pretty much the entire, you know, as far as the, the actual written document, that, that's the only thing that has been changed related to C-MOR. Um, and then also looking at um, for the joint committee, um, we, we didn't, we do not have a, a project manager on staff. The prior arrangement had it where the county provided a project manager. We're not doing that since we are doing C-MOR, so we've got Manoy who we've contracted with. And then at each one of the meetings which we have, you know, every week, uh, we have meetings, so um, we're, we're constantly being up, updated with information. And so with that, they will be providing, you know, um, normally they provide uh, a synopsis plus a schedule at every week's meeting, so both boards will be getting that information, just kind of look at the timeline, kind of where we are in the process. When these projects get going, it'll be, there'll be a lot of information flowing, so they, a lot of it will be out there. But basically, that, that's pretty much it. It's pretty much standard uh, inter-local governmental agreement between the two and, and um, so I would, I would propose or recommend that you look at it at your next meeting for consideration.
Um, the only thing I would ask is that the Board of Education maybe put a completion percentage, kind of like you, you have a, uh, in your county manager's report, kind of where process it is, what's happening. Um, or maybe even Vanoy can provide that for the county, just so that the public can see what percentage, you know, are we on track, are we not on track, are we on budget, are we not on budget? I'm just kind of following up in more than one area.
And really just to make sure that everybody can see that it's going to be a good one.
I think there's consensus to move forward. Moving on now to rules and procedures, rules of procedure.
We kind of had been talking about this, um, creating a, a more uh, concise rules and procedure policy. And so Andy and I went through this and um, pretty much added a lot of different stuff that, that other counties and other um, organizations have put in place. And it's going back to um, a lot of the um, written, I guess, rules and procedures. Of course, it's Robert Ford's order, which is a very thick book and you have the Institute of Government and the School of Government. They have given a lot of publications throughout the years for small county boards or small boards and the processes. This is basically taking a snapshot of all of those different, you know, publications and going through and having a more precise document just for Jackson County. And so that's, it's basically what's been laid out. And this is just for your reference. There was talking about, you know, they really had no there were a lot of the, the current um, resolution that was on file, kind of referenced back to publications of the School of Government. And this is more of a, a guiding document that's, you know, concise. So anyway, it'd just be for your consideration and this is in draft form at this point, so if there's any modification or anything y'all can think of that you as a board need to add, um, you know, please just let us know and and we can, we can add anything to it as long as it's in the, in the statutes, so.
Oh, great. I, I'd like to change the meetings to the same time.
Yeah, that was the only, only caveat I had is if, if we're going to, you know, be consistent, is, is it going to be six, six-thirty that we always start? That's going to be.
But the reason we done those originally is because of Mark Jones', former commissioner. He was on the twice. And they met uh, third, the third usually event each month and it, he had a hard time getting out of that meeting coming up, so that's, that's why we, I think we done six-thirty originally.
Would have six-thirty for both of them. That would be fine.
Six, six-thirty, yeah. Push it later.
Better for me, six-thirty.
It's tough to get down.
So if you do six-thirty, the work session starts, starts at.
It might be a late night, but it typically is anyway. John, do you have any objections or something?
I, I'm fine with either six or six-thirty. Doesn't, doesn't make a big difference.
May make it easier for the public to get here as well.
Yep.
I would just make that change and I think we're in good shape.
Put it on the agenda with that change at the next meeting.
Any other? Uh, second motion for adjournment. And a second?
Seconds.
All in favor? Uh, none opposed, we'll adjourn.